Good evening. At this time, I would like to call the City of Bowie Regular City Council Meeting of Monday, April 1st, 2024. It is now 8:05 PM. I would ask everyone who is able to stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
And this is October 4th, right?
Yeah, right, yeah. Madam City Clerk, would you make sure for the record we have a quorum?
Yes, Mayor, we do have a quorum this evening. In council chambers, we have Councilmember Stev, Councilmember Rogers, Mayor Protem Wolfley, Mayor Adams, and Councilmember Brady. And via teams virtually, we have Councilmember Indebumavu and Councilmember Truesdale.
Thank you very much. At this time, I will entertain a motion if we choose for agenda additions, deletions, and amendments.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to remove items C, E, F, and G from the new business agenda and address those later during the budgetary process.
Uh, second.
It's moved improperly second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please respond with an aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same favor. Hearing none, motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to-
Councilmember.
I would like to move items F and G on the consent agenda, the letters to Prince George's County on their budget, and the parking planning on their budget to a new item for a brief discussion before you approve.
Second.
It's been moved improperly second. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, please respond with an aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same favor. Hearing none, motion carries.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to remove from new business item G for postponement to discussion during budget.
That was already-
Already done.
(laughing).
I withdraw my redundant motion.
Thank you, Councilmember. At this time, Madam City Clerk, do we have any citizen participation?
No, Mayor, we don't have anyone signed up this evening.
Okay. Well, at this time, we will now move to presentations, and the Diverted Committee Presentation on Arab American Heritage Month. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor.
Just adjust the mic as you-
Yes. Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Councilmembers. During the month of April, the City of Bowie recognizes National Arab American Heritage Month and celebrates a diverse tapestry of American Muslims, Chaldeens, in both integral parts of the vibrant Arab American community. Arab Muslims hailing from various countries in the Arab world bring with them a rich cultural heritage, diverse traditions, and deep commitment to faith and community. Similarly, Chaldeens and indigenous Christian groups from the Middle East enrich the mosaic of Arab American culture with their language, traditions, religion, and resilience. Together, Arab Muslims, Chaldeens, contribute to the cultural, social, and economic fabric of the United States, embodying the spirit of unity, diversity, and strength during this commemorative month and beyond. Arab American Heritage Month, observed annually in April, serves as a poignant reminder of the vibrant culture and the profound contributions of Arab Americans in the tapestry of American society. This month, long celebration offers an opportunity to recognize and honor the diverse experiences, achievements, and resilience of Arab Americans, including those from the state of Maryland. As we reflect on the significance of Arab American Heritage Month, it's essential to highlight the invaluable contributions and enduring legacy of notable Arab Americans who have left an indelible mark on the fabric of Maryland's history and identity. Maryland, renowned for its cultural diversity and vibrant community, is home to a thriving Arab American population that has enriched the state's social, economic, and cultural landscape. From the bustling urban centers to the close-knit suburban communities, Arab Americans in Maryland have played a vital role in fostering cross-cultural understanding, promoting diversity, and celebrating their heritage. Through vibrant festivals, community events, and educational initiatives, Arab Americans in Maryland have showcased the beauty of their traditions, languages, cuisines, and customs, contributing to the state's cultural vibrancy and fostering a spirit of inclusivity and unity. Among the notable Arab Americans from Maryland is Helen Thomas, a pioneering journalist and White House correspondent who blazed trails and shattered stereotypes throughout her illustrious career. Both to the Lebanese immigrants in Winchester, Kentucky, Thomas's unwavering commitment to the journalistic integrity and fearless reporting made her a respected voice in the field of journalism. As the first female member and the dean of the White House Press Corps, Thomas's indomitable spirit, tireless pursuit of truth, left an enduring legacy in American journalism, inspiring future generations of journalists and advocates for press freedom. Furthermore, Maryland is home to Hoda Kotb, an Emmy Award-winning journalist, television host, and author known for her work on NBC's Today Show. Kotb, born in Norman, Oklahoma, to Egyptian parents, has become a beloved figure in American media, captivating audiences with her warmth, authenticity, and unwavering positivity. Through her reporting and storytelling, Kotb has shed light on important social issues, elevated diverse voices, and inspired countless individuals to embrace their unique identities and pursue their dreams. In addition to Thomas and Kotb, Maryland's Arab American communities boasts numerous entrepreneurs, educators, and community leaders who have made significant contributions to the state's social, economic, and civic fabric. From pioneering business owners and healthcare professionals to dedicated educators, grassroots activists, Arab Americans in Maryland have demonstrated ingenuity and steadfast commitment to serving their communities and advancing the common good. Their diverse talents, leadership, and philanthropy, they continue to foster a spirit of unity, compassion, and empowerment, enriching the lives of all Marylanders and leaving a lasting legacy of hope, resilience for future generations. As we honor their contributions and celebrate their heritage, let us reaffirm our commitment to building a more inclusive, equitable, and compassionate society where all individuals can thrive and fulfill their potential regardless of their background or identity. Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Uh, Mr. Warren David, please come forward.
Uh, Mr. Warren David is a third-generation Arab American of Lebanese and Syrian heritage. He has a very impressive and long bio, but I will just point out that he was the executive producer of the NPR series Arabesque Insights into Arab Culture, which aired on WDET FM and distributed via satellite to more than 50 national public radio affiliates. The series won a gold medal from the International Record Radio Festival. He also was the executive producer of the Emmy Award-winning public television series Arab American Stories, produced in partnership with Detroit Public Television and disseminated nationally. At this time, I'd like to read a proclamation from the City of Bowie. A proclamation of the Council of the City of Bowie, Maryland, proclaiming April 2024 as National Arab American Heritage Month. Whereas, for over a century, Arab Americans have been making valuable contributions to virtually every aspect of American society in medicine, law, business, education, technology, government, military service, culture, and whereas since migrating to America, men and women of Arab descent have shared their rich culture and traditions with neighbors and friends while also setting fine examples of model citizens in public service. And whereas, Arab Americans brought with them to America their resilient family values, strong work ethic, dedication to education, and diversity in faith and creed that have added strength to our great democracy. And whereas, Arab Americans have also enriched our society by sharing in the entrepreneurial American spirit that makes our nation free and prosperous. And whereas, the history of Arab Americans in the U.S. remains neglected or defaced by misconceptions, bigotry, and anti-Arab hate in the forms of crimes and speech. And whereas, Arab American issues such as civil rights abuses, harmful stereotyping, and bullying must be combated in the forms of education and awareness. And whereas, Arab Americans join all Americans in the desire to see a peaceful and diverse society where every individual is treated equally and feels safe. And whereas, the incredible contributions and heritage of Arab Americans have helped us build a better nation. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed that the Council of the City of Bowie, Maryland hereby celebrates the contributions Arab Americans have made to society and declares April 2024 to be the National Arab American Heritage Month in the City of Bowie, presented by the Council of the City of Bowie, Maryland at a regular meeting on the first day of April 2024. Timothy J. Adams, Mayor. Thank you so very much. Here you go. Would you like to get a picture? Would you turn and hold that and could everybody come on in? Please, Michael. All right. Thank you again.
On behalf of the Arab America Foundation, we want to thank the city of Bowie for giving us this-
If you'd like to go to the mic, please.
The way that people at home can hear you, so we can-
Yeah. For prosperity.
There we go.
Are we here? There you go. Yes. I just want to, on behalf of the Arab America Foundation, we founded this initiative in 2017, and I want to thank the City of Bowie for recognizing Arab Americans, not just in Bowie but in Maryland, and for helping us to amplify our narrative, our voices. We promote the Arab identity and heritage in the United States, and this is our initiative where we, last year, we had 47 governors sign proclamations. The President of the United States gave us a proclamation last year and this year. And as you know, Arab Americans are 22 different nations. When you say Arab, you know, Arab could be Lebanese, could be Syrian, could be Egyptian, could be Moroccan, but what unites us is the Arabic language. We have Muslims, we have Christians, we have many different ethnic, we're very diverse politically, ethnically, and religiously, and but we come together under the Arabic language, the Arab values, the Arab music, we all eat hummus, food, and so forth, and but we also face many issues, and especially in the media, there's stereotyping, there are denigrating images out there that are directed against Arab Americans. This initiative helps for us to promote our narrative, and we thank you again, and we thank the city and we thank the people of Maryland for recognizing our initiative. Thank you.
Thank you for being here. We now will be moving on to city boards and committees. Ms. Erica Kennedy was interviewed on March 18th, 2024, for appointment to the Economic Development Committee. Council concur to appoint her to the committee as a regular member for a two-year term. Councilmember Brady, would you please move to appoint her?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I'd like to move the appointment of Ms. Erica Kennedy to the Economic Development Committee.
Second.
It's been moved improperly second. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, please respond with an aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same favor. Hearing none, motion carries. All right. Ms. Adaleke Wales was interviewed on March 18th, 2024, for appointment to the Environmental Advisory Committee. Council concur to appoint her to the committee as a youth member for a two-year term. Please, Mayor Protem Wolfley, would you please move to appoint her?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to appoint Ms. Olalua Adaleke Wales to the Environmental Advisory Committee.
Second.
It's been moved improperly second. Any discussion? Hearing none, call for the vote. All in favor, please respond with an aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same favor. Hearing none, motion carries. Are the two new committee members in attendance come forward, please? Come on. Stand. Oh, okay. All right, Mayor Protem.
I'm sorry.
Stand your line. No, just kidding. All right, no, no, we're, no. If you would, please raise your right hand. Aye, state your name.
I, Erica Kennedy.
Do swear or affirm-
Do affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And that I will be faithful-
And that I will be faithful.
And bear true allegiance-
And bear true allegiance.
To the state of Maryland.
To the state of Maryland.
And support the Constitution-
And support the Constitution.
And laws thereof.
And laws thereof.
And that I will-
And that I will.
To the best of my skill and judgment-
To the best of my skill and judgment.
Diligently and faithfully-
Diligently and faithfully.
Without partiality or prejudice-
Without partiality or prejudice.
Execute the office of regular member of- And state the committee you're going to be on.
Economic Development Committee. Environmental Advisory Committee.
Mm-hmm, okay. According to the Constitution-
According to the Constitution.
And the laws of this state.
And the laws of this state.
Congratulations, and welcome to the committee.
Welcome aboard.
Yes, Kennedy? So very much, very much appreciated. Thank you so very much. Thank you. There you go.
Congrats, so good to see you again.
Appreciate your volunteerism. We will now move on to council announcements. Any council members with any announcements at this time? Okay. Councilmember Rogers?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On April the 11th, the City of Bowie will have the State of the City address as well as an update for Maryland District Legislation, Legislator, Legislator 23, from 8:30 to 10:30 AM at the Courtyard Marriott Overhorn Science Tech Drive in Bowie. And it's hosted by the Greater Bowie Chamber of Commerce. I just wanted to share that. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Stev?
As many are aware, recently, there was tragically a fire that destroyed 14 units of the Everglade Apartments in Bowie. I just wanted to both give us an opportunity to extend our thoughts to those who were negatively affected by this incident, but I also want to take a moment to say a very big thank you to city personnel. We got consistently very positive feedback from residents, as well as the Red Cross, which partnered with you and your teams to support those residents. I wanted to quote the Red Cross statement, but essentially, they stated that your staff operated with nothing but professionalism and a willingness to go above and beyond in a crisis. And one of the many things that I am grateful for living in this city is knowing that we have a staff that, when the time calls for it, will rush towards the dangerous things and into the crises with the helping hand and will not stand aside. It allows me to sleep more peacefully as a member of this council and as a resident, and I am grateful to all you for your leadership and to your many teams who work very hard, often thanklessly, in service of our community. And so I just want to take a moment and say thank you.
Here, here.
Good job. Before I make any comments, any other announcements, council members? Uh, Councilmember Indebumadu? We can't hear you, council member. We still can't hear you. Is there- I think we have a, some technical difficulty, council member, because we can't hear you. Our Councilman Truesdale.
Truesdale is off, hasn't been here.
Testing one, testing.
Okay, I think we're going to try and get her back in. Is that what we're doing? Councilmember Truesdale, I don't know, did you have any comments you'd like to make at this time announcements?
Yes, yes, thank you. I would like to definitely commend the staff as well pertaining to the fire that we had last week and just for your service and the commitment and keep the prayers and thoughts of the families, families that was displaced in our hearts and whatever we, you know, whatever we can do as a community, that's why we're community strong. So also, I just want to wish, fill a great Thanksgiving weekend to everyone and much blessings to the families.
Okay, thank you. Uh, any other comments before I make any other? If not, a couple of things I would like to do. First and foremost, I would like to say how really impressed I think so many people were with the response of the city staff and everyone for the fire, for the firefighters as well here. But I also would like to make a point of volunteerism. As we saw the two young people come forward today to volunteer to work on our committees, we have a volunteer fire department, and we really need to make sure that we reach out to all the community and make sure that we understand-
Well, well, here.
Is now joining.
That we make sure that while we're talking with our families, friends, and everyone else, that we promote that, that our volunteer fire department is also so very important to us, and I want to thank them also for their actions. And last but not least from me, I would like to remind everybody, I believe this coming Friday is the food truck frenzy at Allen Pond. So if you can, please come on out and enjoy that. I think the time is from four to six, uh-
Four to, uh, four to seven.
Four to seven? So please, if you can, come on out. Having said that, Councilmember Indebumadu, are you able-
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Fantastic. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you to staff for helping me sort out those technical difficulties. Well, first of all, good afternoon or good evening, District 4 and City of Bowie. I just have a couple of announcements this evening that I'll run through, just three of them really quickly, updates for District 4. First update is, I had the opportunity to attend the first-ever South Lake Homeowners Association meeting, which had about over 150 residents in attendance. It was like the first time I've seen a homeowners association meeting that packed, but it was really great to be with the South Lake community and hear the updates on how South Lake is coming about. Essentially, the number one concern that did come out of the, most of the residents that were out south, at South Lake, but there were actually two of them, the first one being economic development and making sure that the appropriate retailers are able to be attracted to the South Lake community, given the homeowners' prices that they're paying. So I do want to provide the community with an update that I will be meeting with the Michael's Company. I have reached out to them to discuss those concerns in terms of the types of retail that's being attracted to South Lake, to ensure that they understand the concerns of the community. So heard you loud and clear there. And then we also did have our Bowie Police Department that was in attendance and answered a lot of safety questions as well, so thank you so much for that. The next update is in regards to, a couple of weeks ago, I received a letter from Department of Transportation, essentially Maryland State Highway, responding to my inquiries on temporary improvements to 301. I know that staff is working on scheduling a meeting. Hopefully, we'll get an update on how that's going and what date that will be proposed to, so that we can get a response from Maryland State Highway and engage in a dialogue. But in the meantime, I will be reaching out to Council, County Councilmember Ingrid Watson's office to see her thoughts on temporary improvements at 301 and be working with Councilmember Walla Blague, who is hosting a town hall alongside of Maryland State Highway to discuss concerns on 301. So I will keep the community posted there. The last one is, I did receive an update from staff, Assistant City Manager Daniel Muir. Thank you so much for the email this afternoon in regards to the temporary improvements regarding speeding, well, maybe not call them temporary, but essentially improvements regarding speeding on certain streets throughout District 4. A couple weeks back, we had a conversation about potential striping that would essentially could occur as another option to speeding throughout the community. Essentially, the update that I got from staff today is that Public Works is working on compiling a list, and striping has been paused, awaiting moderate temperatures in the spring. So I do want to continue to reassure District 4 residents that Atlanta's Drive is a huge priority. I had a couple residents reach out to me last week in regards to speeding on Atlanta's Drive, so that is the update at this time, and I'll make sure that I keep the community updated. Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor, and I look forward to the rest of the meeting.
Thank you very much. Any other council members? Any comments? Uh, here we go. We'll now move on to the City Manager's Report.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. I have no report today. Thank you.
Thank you, City Manager. We will now move on to the consent agenda, and I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
That's five. Councilman Brady, I believe you have items A through E. We moved F and G to new business.
That is correct.
Okay, just in your motion.
So you amend the motion?
They've already been-
It's already been moved, but yes, the consent agenda is A through E.
It's been moved improperly second. Any discussion? Hearing none, the motion carries. Councilmember, would you like to move on what we were going to do with F and G?
We already did that. It goes to new business.
Huh?
It'll go to new business.
That's what I'm saying, but we need to move it there.
No, we already did during the addition, deletions.
It was a motion, yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Any old business, city clerk?
Yes, sir.
Yes, we have the adoption of ordinance 03-24.
Okay.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
The adoption of the ordinance, 0324. I'm sorry, please go right ahead.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
H. Byron Matthews, Finance Director. This evening, we are here to explore and present ordinance 324, amending the adopted budget for the fiscal year ending June 30th, '24. The relevance of this ordinance is to allow the city to purchase vehicles, more specifically police vehicles. According to the ordinance and also located on page 155 and 156, was the original appropriation to purchase these 13 vehicles. Due to the manufacturer not being able to produce those vehicles for the City of Bowie, staff has looked for an alternative to replace those vehicles. The alternative requires additional funding of $85,100 in order to replace those vehicles. Tonight, staff is asking for your approval to- replace those vehicles. Tonight, uh, staff is asking for your approval to add that additional eighty-five thousand, one hundred dollars to the current, um, FY24 budget. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Matthews. Are there any questions for, uh, Mr. Matthews? Uh, hearing none, I will ask, uh, I will open the public hearing. Are there any comments?
No, Mayor, there's no one signed up this evening, and no comments were received.
Okay, I will now declare the public, uh, hearing closed. I will now entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move...
Go ahead, Councilman Watson.
Uh, I'd like to move for adoption of ordinance 03-24.
It's been moved improperly. Second, uh, any discussion? Hearing none, I will call for the vote. All in favor, please respond with an aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same favor? Hearing none, the motion carries. Thank you. We will now move on to new business. Uh, the Prince George's County Office of Human Rights, uh, Representatives with the Public Outreach and Engagement Division of Prince George's County Office of Human Rights will brief the council on their work and how they can be a resource to the city. Please come forward and... Thank you for being here this evening, and adjust the mic as to what works for you.
Thank you. Um, actually, the, um, Division Manager for Public Outreach and Engagement is here. Um, my name is Renee Battle-Brooks. I'm the Director of the Office of Human Rights, and, um, it's through Kyla Hannington, uh, she arranged for us to come and speak briefly with, um, city council members. Uh, we want it to come because, um, we really want everyone to know of the resources that we have, that perhaps if, uh, constituents have concerns or issues, that we are a place that can, that can help. So we wanna sketch a brief history of who we are, how we got here, and what we do.
Okay.
We have been in existence now for fifty-one years. Um, we were known formally as the Human Relations Commission. About two and a half to three years ago, we changed our name to the Office of Human Rights, because it's, it is more encompassing of what we do. Briefly, and for those who've heard this before, I think it's an important story, but this story highlights, um, the power of what one person can do. And we exist essentially because of a Prince Georgian named Teresa Douglas Banks, who in nineteen seventy-two looked around, and she was concerned about, um, some of the inequities that people of color were facing in the county. And it was the same year, coincidentally, that Prince George's County moved to its current form of governance, that is, with the county executive and county council, away from the commission system that I believe Charles and probably Calvert County still use. So those two things were coming together. Teresa Douglas Banks was, um, a wife, a mother, an educator. She was an African-American female, and she lobbied hard for this agency to exist, to be able to essentially investigate civil rights claims. Um, and so she testified at the public hearing. She actually went back to her seat. She suffered a fatal heart attack, and she ended up dying later that evening at the hospital.
Wow.
When we pull her bill, her, the law, um, she is listed as an honorary county council person and an honorary, um, sponsor of the bill. So that was nineteen seventy-two. We were the first law that was passed in nineteen seventy-two under the new form of governance. So that's where we come from. So we are known first for, we have four divisions now. Um, our first division is investigating allegations of discrimination, civil rights violations where you work, live, or play. So that encompasses employment, uh, discrimination, as is the same for the national numbers. Employment is really the bulk of, of the allegations that we are asked to investigate by complainants who come forward. But we also have authority to investigate housing discrimination. We have authority to investigate, uh, public accommodations, discrimination in education, discrimination in law enforcement, and a little bit of, um, commercial and residential real estate transactions and some banking discrimination within that subset. Um, we also, uh, investigate, uh, the Fair Labor Act, which is also known as Ban the Box, and what that means, right, for our returning citizens. And under our housing, we actually also have, um, some of the appraisal bias that you hear about in the news. So we are a resource. Um, complaints are taken only by somebody that is aggrieved. So if somebody feels that they have been discriminated, um, we are the agency that they can come to if it occurred within Prince George's County. So that's our first division. Again, Teresa Douglas Banks, who, who fought for this. Um, our second division is, uh, human trafficking. Um, in twenty thirteen, the county council recognized that, in fact, human trafficking exists. It exists everywhere. And they stood up the Human Trafficking Task Force, which is an anomaly in terms of how task forces really operate. So it's, it's wonderful. Most task forces are not government-owned and government-run. Um, and so we have a great relationship between, uh, private, public, uh, law enforcement, different agencies. We have, um, whoever has an interest and has a hand or stake in this, uh, we invite to the committee, or to the task force, sorry. We are tasked with, uh, three mandates. One is to identify and recover victim survivors of sex and labor trafficking. And as you know, labor trafficking was finally outlawed in the great state of Maryland, October first, twenty nineteen. So we now, yes, exactly. We now have that as, uh, a crime. So we're tasked with identifying and recovering victim survivors. We are tasked with, um, really increasing the quality of the prosecution of traffickers. And we are tasked with educating the public, because we recognize that law enforcement cannot be everywhere, twenty-four-seven. And if we all arm ourselves with the knowledge that we can all collectively work together to stamp this out. So that's our task force. We have several committees. I won't go into details, but we invite anybody, private, public, agencies, entities, volunteers, faith, uh, health, anybody that wants to join us in the fight, they are welcome to join and serve on the various committees. Um, so that's our second division. Our third division is language access. In twenty seventeen, county council passed a law, it's about eighteen pages, but synthesized to its simplest form, it really says that everybody seeking county government services are entitled to those services and the language of their preference. It's very easy to say, but it is a mammoth task. So we are tasked with the implementation, with the development, the implementation, and now the enforcement of it. Our fourth division is public outreach and engagement, and, uh, we're gonna invite Kyla Hannington to come in and talk a little bit about what her division does, but it, hers is the wraparound.
Thank you.
Hi, so yes, I'm not as tall as Renee. Uh, my name is Kyla Hannington, and I am the Public Outreach and Engagement Division Manager with the Office of Human Rights. And our division, as Renee says, we're the wraparound in the sense that we try to give information to people about all the divisions, about the office, and all the things that we do. And, uh, as Renee said, we are here today because we know that you, as elected officials, hear from your constituents, you're out there, you know where people are having problems. We wanted to make sure you knew what we did. Um, our division also looks to build relationships across people, uh, across diverse peoples. If you think about the investigation unit, um, after discrimination has occurred, there they are to do those, those investigations and, and, and right wrongs if need be, or, uh, make sure training's done. We're trying to get, before discrimination occurs, by building relationship and understanding, and hopefully, you know, stop discrimination before it begins, because people are understanding each other and getting along. So we do, um, a bunch of different community programming. We do, uh, uh, community conversations, and we're looking, um, we're always looking for partners. If the City of Bowie is ever looking to, uh, put together an event, we'd love to help with, uh, forming a, a conversation or, um, probably many different things, actually. Yeah, that's kind of why I trailed out. I was like, there's a lot we could do. So, um, but really, we just wanted to make you aware on the people who are watching at home, just to know that we're a resource for, for you, and we hope that we can help your residents. So.
Thank you. And, uh, there are two other things. One falls within Kyla's division. We stood up a youth leadership academy, um, where we are unabashedly trying to grow social influencers among the young for civil and human rights, so that when it is no longer sort of the it topic, that there are young people in our communities that understand the importance of civil and human rights and what it means to all of us, and what it really means to our democracy, and that they are the ones that are still, um, doing the work. It's ages eleven to twenty-two, um, and we're in our fourth cohort. Uh, we're starting, third?
Fourth year.
Fourth year, yes.
Next one.
That's right. We started, actually, during COVID. Um, and, um, so if anybody wants more information, uh, we've had lots of different iterations, virtual, but we're going to have in person, uh, starting tomorrow. Uh, one of our libraries are partnering with us. And the final thing that we are responsible for, we only manage it, but it's, uh, with our partner CARE. CARE stands for Capital Area Immigrants Rights Coalition. And essentially, if, um, a Prince George's County resident has been taken into federal custody, custody under threat of deportation, an attorney is provided to go to, um, immigration court as long as they qualify for the thing. So they just have to be a resident at the time that they were picked up. Okay, I think I covered everything. So thank you. Um, we have brochures and information, if that is helpful, and we can leave those with, um, Madam City.
City Clerk, okay. Well, thank you so very much. Thanks for being here this evening. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
And it's good to know that we have that resource, uh, within the county, but also, uh, knowing that as we need to, uh, we, as a city, know we can reach out to you as well. Thank you so very much.
Thank you. Thank you for having us.
Next on the agenda is a state of place analysis, uh, City Activity Centers, the presentation. I'll turn that over to, uh, Mr. Joe Miner.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. I'm Joe Miner, the City Planning Director, here to introduce this item. Um, last June, council approved of a partnership with the city and the Maryland National Capitol Park Planning Commission to undertake a state of place analysis of some of the activity centers in, in Bowie. In particular, we're focusing on Old Town Bowie, the Maryland Route 450 Main Street area, and the Bowie Town Center area. So this study took place with the, uh, county planning board's concurrence and their, um, agreement to fund the bulk of the study. The city agreed to also chip in, uh, some funds from our economic development division's budget because of the focus on the Bowie Town Center area, which was one of our objectives. And so we have tonight an opportunity for you to see the product that has been created by the State of Place, uh, firm. And we have with us tonight, um, two guests. Uh, the first is Ms. Karen Miral, who is with the Maryland National Capitol Park and Planning Commission. She's a project manager. And we have the consultant, uh, with State of Place, Ms. Mariela Alfonso. And she's going to make, Ms. Alfonso is going to make a presentation to council so that you can understand the type of analysis that we had done and some of the findings. We're really at the beginning of this process, and we'd like to educate council as to, uh, this product and all of the benefits it can provide for the city. So at this time, I would ask Mariela to come forward and, and give a brief presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Miner. Please come forward, and thank you for joining us this evening.
Thank you so much. So, um, as Joe said...
You can bring the mic down a little bit, too.
Yeah, very short. So as Joe said, um, I'm Mariela Alfonso. I'm the founder and CEO of State of Place, and I'm really excited to be here with you to discuss the work we've been doing with the City of Bowie, with funding, support from the Maryland National Parks and Planning Commission. Um, so to give you some context to the reason for this work, um, oh, put this, uh, no. Um, at the end of twenty twenty-two, after the City of Bowie had finalized their, um, general plan update, the city's planning and economic development department reached out to us to help them strategize how best to leverage urban design to optimize the walkability and value of their core economic development zones. So, um, we then proposed to apply our evidence-based and data-driven approach to identify and prioritize specific built environment changes that would most likely increase walkability and different aspects of economic value, um, and then quantify the corresponding value add and return on investment of those urban design improvements. So the goal was to optimize the cost efficiency and economic effectiveness of the city's investments, essentially identify improvements with the biggest bang for the buck, uh, but also help the city secure the approvals, funding, and buy-in necessary to ensure that these improvements would be implemented, uh, by quantifying their potential value. So now, before we get into the details of how we helped the City of Bowie actually achieve these aims, I'm gonna provide a high-level overview of how our evidence-based and data-driven tech-enabled process works. I'm going backwards. Okay. Um, so first, to quantify the value of urban design, we must be able to measure the built environment. So first, we extract data on a hundred and twenty-seven street-level features, like sidewalks, benches, and crosswalks, land uses, vehicle lanes, crosswalk markings, et cetera, from street-level images, using our various machine learning models. And we crunch this data into something we call the State of Place Index, which is a score from zero to one hundred, which measures walkability, bikeability, and overall built environment quality, across ten different aspects of urban design that we know actually impact people's decisions to walk, their perceptions of places, and overall quality of life. Data is then visualized graphically in our software, breaking down an area's built environment assets and needs, and then spatially to objectively identify areas of built environment investment opportunities. But that's the diagnostic aspect of the tool. For over two decades, my work has quantified how urban design impacts economic, environmental, health, and social value, so as to help identify where and what built environment investments would optimally drive that value. So, for example, in twenty twelve, I co-authored a broking study where we evaluated the relationship between state of place and various economic value, uh, metrics and social equity. And we collected data on nearly three hundred built environment features, like trees, sidewalks, benches, land uses, again, back when we collected this data manually. Um, we also collected various real estate values and areas median household income for sixty-six neighborhoods in the DCU metro region that varied with respect to walkability, density, mix of land uses, and included urban, suburban, ex-urban, and rural areas with and without transit access. And back then, we found that for every twenty-point increase in the State of Place Index, there was a nine-dollar square foot increase in office rents, seven for retail, a three-hundred-dollar unit increase in residential rents, and an eighty percent bump in retail revenues, as well as an eighty-one-dollar per square foot increase in home values. And since we've, since we've created the, that forecasting model, we've done other, predicted other outcomes, like vehicle collisions, chronic diseases, crime, transit ridership, and more, all tied to the built environment. So what we've been able to do is translate this evidence into predictive analytics that helps inform how to prioritize limited resources. And so based on the evidence, it turns out that some urban design features will matter more than others, depending on what goal you're actually wanting to achieve the most. So some things may matter more for driving retail revenues versus reducing asthma. So what our software done is, uh, software does is then translate that evidence into urban design recommendations that are most likely to maximize the outcomes that matter most to any given city. And then our SimCity-like scenario tool shows how those recommendations to add crosswalk markings, or outdoor dining, or a park, would increase the State of Place Index in real time. And then our forecasting tool calculates how those urban design changes translate into real-life outcomes, like reductions in collision rates or increased property values. And then it estimates the return on investment of those proposed projects, so that cities, again, can vie for the funding, justify the decisions, and maximize that bank for the buck. So for the City of Bowie, the goal was to prioritize urban design changes that provided the biggest bang for the economic development buck. And to do that, we decided to update the original broking study that we conducted in twenty twelve, to reflect today's demand for walkable places, but also reflect post-COVID dynamics. So now I'll walk you through how we've arrived at our recommended urban design scenarios for the city, including data collection, our analysis, the use of the software, our economic forecasting, generating the recommendations, automating the scenario analysis, and then we'll... we'll preview the forecast report we're working on for the city. So to replicate the broking's forecasting model, we included all places that were originally included in the broking study, but we also added 12 additional neighborhoods that were either of interest to the city and/or helped further sort of diversify the kinds of places we were considering in statistical analysis. And it's really critical to include places across incomes, design, and density in order to statistically quantify how those differences across design relate to differences across economic value. Overall, we collected data for nearly 5,000 blocks. We also collected data for three core Bowie economic development zones: Bowie Town Center, Old Town Bowie, and the Main Street area around Route 450, as delineated by the city. So specifically, again, we collected data on 127 microscale built environment features for every street block, and we defined the street as the area between two intersections on both sides of the street. And as we mentioned earlier, we use visual machine learning models to analyze these images to extract this data, and we also pulled data from open street maps. We then aggregated that into the State of Place Index for every single street block. Now, it's really important to note that, especially if you're familiar with other walkability indices, that our scoring system is unique in a few ways. First, while we measure 127 features, you don't need every single feature to score 100. The scoring isn't meant to be prescriptive, because there's many different ways to create a good street. Instead, the highest score is actually determined by the highest observed score in our database. That's why it's so important to pull from different places. And also, in part, because of how our scoring works, it's actually pretty difficult to get a score of 100 on our index, and indeed, only the top 5% of the blocks in our overall database even score above a 60. So 60 is really good. So it's really important to take into consideration when thinking about an area score. And then also, our index is composed of 10 different sub-indices that I mentioned earlier that measure various aspects of urban design that, again, we know empirically actually impacts quality of place and mobility and just the overall quality of the built environment. And so this includes what we call form. It's basically how the buildings meet the street. Density, which is a measure of building compactness and height, not population density. Connectivity, which we measure it as how feasible it is to get from one block to the other without any barriers. And together, this basically measures the urban fabric, the street network. Next, we measure various destinations, including proximity to non-residential destinations, parks and public spaces, and recreational facilities. Then we measure comfort, which includes pedestrian and bike amenities and traffic safety, or measures at the intersection or mid-block that make it safe for pedestrians to cross. And finally, we measure pleasurable, which includes aesthetics and maintenance, as well as personal safety, which we define as built environment features that impacts people's perceptions of safety, not actual crime. So to give just a few examples of the individual features that make up some of these urban design dimensions, for pedestrian and bike amenities, this includes things like bus stops with seating, sidewalk presence and completion, street trees. And then for traffic safety, we're considering features like the number of vehicle lanes, crosswalks, different pedestrian and traffic signs, and sidewalk buffers. And we have a whole list of all the features that we collect publicly available. Now, for the Bowie areas, we found that Old Town Bowie had the overall highest score at 51, next Bowie Town Center at 43.2, and Route 450 at 35.9. But what's interesting is that, as you can see, the reasons why they scored that way, those are the 10 urban design dimensions for each. When you look at those 10 sub-indices, it's really different. So Old Town Bowie scored best on form and connectivity, but more poorly on parks and public spaces relatively. Bowie Town Center scored well on personal safety and connectivity, but less well on density and proximity. And then Route 450 scored more poorly on pedestrian and bike amenities. Now, in the software, the city can see the index and sub-index for every single individual block within the three areas as well, and this really helps objectively understand every single blocks and assets, assets and needs, and helps inform how to focus urban design efforts moving forward. And it also provides a baseline score from which progress can be measured as the areas evolve. The software also visualizes each area as a heat map, and the city can toggle between the index and those 10 sub-indices to be able to, again, understand areas of assets and needs. And just finally, another visual to help you sort of conceptualize the kind of places that score at different levels of the State of Place Index. Originally, downtown DC scored on the highest level, Clarendon scored second, Rockville in the third, White Flint Metro in the fourth, and North Woodridge in the last level. And these basically served as early benchmarks when we were first developing the scoring for the index. So next, we compiled data for office rents and retail rents, CoStar, and residential rents from the census with the help of the Maryland National Capitol Parks and Planning Commission, and we also collected average residential property values per square foot. Finally, the Maryland National Capitol Parks and Planning Commission also pulled data on median household incomes from the American Community Survey from the census, and we pulled data on the distance to the core, measured as metro center in DC. And these data were really important to collect to be able to control if each of these other factors impact economic value, so we could then isolate the actual impact of urban design specifically. We then developed a forecasting model to quantify the impact of the overall State of Place Index on real estate value, as well as identify the specific impact of each of the 10 urban design dimensions on those values. And as you can see, there's different aspects of urban design were more important for some of these economic outcomes than others. So public spaces were more important for office rents, traffic safety for retail rents, pedestrian and bike amenities for residential rents, and again, public spaces for residential property values. And so understanding which of these urban design dimensions were the most important for each kind of value helped inform our recommendations and create a more effective and cost-efficient built environment investment strategy that optimizes the economic development value for the city. So to create those urban design recommendations, we considered four different factors. First, how is the block scoring? So what's the current index and sub-index? Prioritizing those where there's more room for improvement, so lower-scoring areas. Second, how important each dimension is to all four desired economic development goals? This is based on the results of the regression analysis I just discussed. So as part of the statistical analysis, every dimension is assigned something called a standardized beta, which is basically a number from zero to one, which measures the magnitude of impact of that dimension on any one aspect of real estate value. And so what we did is we balanced each of those scores for each dimension across the four real estate metrics to help us prioritize which urban design dimensions matter most overall. Sorry, backwards. The feasibility was something else we looked at. Basically, some changes are harder to make than others once certain urban design features are in place. So we ranked these as form, density, and connectivity, or the street network being the hardest to change. These receive a lower priority than proximity, parks and public spaces, and recreational facilities, then traffic safety and pedestrian and bike amenities, and then aesthetics and personal safety as the easiest to change, although these can easily be adjusted in the software, and it'll reconfigure the priorities. So that multi-criteria process I just described, it helped prioritize which dimensions should be considered first when considering urban design changes. Then we then prioritize those individual features that belong to each dimension, you know, and try to understand which one of those was going to have the biggest impact on that recommendation. And, for example, if, sorry, I lost my, please, second. Yeah, we then prioritize which individual features should be prioritized within those dimensions, based on how much they would increase the score for that dimension, and we did this for every single block. We then adjusted the recommendations to reflect the context of each block and area based on four different things. So first, we ensured that if we recommended one feature, that in turn, other features that were related or impacted by that feature would also be recommended. So if we recommended a bike lane, we also recommended a reduction in vehicle lanes where appropriate. We also then took into account features that were dependent on each other. So if arcades or sort of like, you know, coverings on the sidewalk were recommended, so were sidewalks, because you can't have arcades without sidewalks. And then next, we considered features where there were multiple options, like with crosswalk markings, there's multiple types of crosswalk markings, white lanes, yellow lanes, but we prioritize only one of those options, again, based off of which one would have the biggest impact on the score. And then finally, while some features would certainly increase the score for any block, like adding restaurants, adding features to every block isn't feasible, so we prioritize the blocks for which that feature would have the biggest impact, and limited the number of blocks for which that feature was recommended, based on the average percentage of blocks that had that feature, based on the top 5% scoring neighborhood in that DC metro sample. We then produced a spreadsheet of all the recommendations for every single block for all three Bowie areas for the city to consider, which listed the dimensions that were most important, to least important, from left to right, and within each dimension, listed each corresponding feature, along with the predicted score increase for that feature, again, from left to right. So the city can now use the scenario tool within the software to test these recommendations, but we also went ahead and automated the scenario process to kind of help them identify the most impactful scenarios, because there's like 600,000 different combinations of the So there are several steps in that process of automating the scenario building. First, we ran all the possible combinations of our recommendations, and there were over 600,000. We predicted the before-after State of Place Index and sub-index scores for each scenario, and then we ranked them based on which had the highest impact to the State of Place Index, but with the least number of changes for each individual dimension for every single block. And then we ranked them on the overall before-after change in the State of Place Index, and then based on the overall before-after change for each dimension, and then selected the top 5% of before-after changes for each individual dimension across all blocks. We then ran the combination of these top 5% scenarios across all features, so not taking into account the individual dimensions. And then we ranked them by which had the highest impact on the top three dimensions that we had prioritized, based on the regression analysis, again, based on the least number of changes across those three dimensions. We then ranked them again, based on the highest impact to the State of Place Index, and based on the least number of changes across all features. And then finally, we chose the top scenario for each area, based on requiring either up to 50%, 75%, or 90% of the recommended feature changes across all blocks. So that's a lot, but basically, the bottom line here is that this entire process really helped us identify scenarios that didn't require changes for every single block, but rather prioritized scenarios or recommendations that had the fewest number of changes that still significantly impacted those top three dimensions that we found in the regression, as well as the overall State of Place Index. So again, biggest bang for the buck. Just a long, complicated process to get there. All right. So just to kind of give you a sense of what these look like, this slide shows the top three scenarios for each area, based on the percentage of changes that would be implemented, and the total number of blocks that required changes. So for here, this is just showing only 50% of the recommended changes being implemented. And on average, you already saw a 21-point increase across the three areas, with the biggest score change of nearly 34 points for Route 450, with only four blocks requiring changes. And you can also see how the top three dimensions were impacted for each scenario. For the 75% of changes, there's an average increase of over 33 points, again, with the biggest impact being seen in Route 450 across eight blocks. And you also start to see more impact, more movement across the top three dimensions. And finally, the average increase is over 45 points. You have 90% of changes. But of course, this requires a lot more changes across many blocks. So this could be sort of like the 10-year plan. But it's not enough to consider the impact of the State of Place Index and dimensions. The design changes are really a means to an end to improved economic development. So we used our updated forecasting model to quantify how these changes would impact real estate values. And for Bowie Town Center, in the 90% scenario, that's a 44.7 increase in the index, that translates to over $12 a square foot premium on existing office rents, nearly $4.50 more for retail, an increase of up to nearly $1,200 for residential rents, and over $260 square foot increase in residential property values. But this, of course, needs to be considered when thinking about balancing economic development with affordable workforce options, but this is certainly an attractive upside by which to attract private developers and spur public-private partnerships, and can inform public policy to ensure affordability. For Old Town Bowie, there was a 40.7 point increase, again, with 90% changes, that translated, again, very high, $11 square foot increase in office, four for retail, over $1,700 in terms of residential rents, and over 240 square foot increase in residential property values. And then finally, for Route 450, with a 50.2 increase, translating to over $14 square foot increases in office rents, $5.50 for retail, over $1,500 in residential rents, and nearly a $300 square foot increase in residential property values. Now, when using these projections, it's really important to note that there are other market dynamics, including demand, that should be considered, especially for office uses. While we predict, the predicted premiums reflect fluctuations in the office, in the real estate market of the DC metro region, as tied to the urban design of those markets, you have to consider the actual demand for those uses within Bowie if considering new uses. But the evidence does support that recommended improvements to urban design would likely lead to increased premiums for these existing uses. And then finally, the next step is to translate these predicted premiums into a return on investment, to be able to compare different scenarios in apples-to-apples way. So this is just an example, because we still need to do this exercise with the city, but for the purposes of showcasing how the ROI predictions work, if you were to consider the $5.55 predicted increase in retail rents over the course of the year, multiplied by the total square footage, assuming it's 50,000 square feet, times a 10-year return period, that's over $33 million of value, and if the cost of the proposed project is $5 million, there would be a predicted ROI of 6.7x. So the idea here is to help the city justify the spend, compare which scenarios have the biggest bang for the buck, and get approvals, funding, and buy-in from key stakeholders. So finally, in terms of next steps, we're going to review the automated scenarios with the city and the Maryland National Parks and Planning Commission, and then make adjustments as necessary, so we can finalize the top three recommended scenarios, and then, again, finalize those ROI calculations. We'll also prepare a final public report. So happy to take your questions.
Thank you for that presentation. That was quite interesting, to say the least. At this time, I will open it up for any of the council members with questions. I will start off with Councilwoman Rogers.
Good evening. Thank you for that presentation. I was trying to follow along. I do have questions. On the last several pages, your numbers were different than the ones in the presentation. So when we're looking at the predicted values-
Yeah.
-that my numbers were different, as well as the calculated ROI. So if we could get an updated one with the-
Oh, I apologize about that. I didn't realize. Yeah, we could absolutely need an updated one. This is accurate.
Okay, so what you have is accurate.
Yeah.
So if we can get an updated version, that would be fine.
Absolutely. Apologies.
That was all I wanted to add.
Okay, sorry, sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Stat?
Just wanted to say a really big thank you for your presentation to Mr. Miner and your staff, for your partnership in this. I was at a regional planning meeting several years ago, and I remember a fellow council member from another municipality, after listening to a long report about how to improve bike, pedestrian, safety, just sat back in his chair and said something to the effect of, you know, the real problem is we just have too many bikers. We need fewer bikers. And I remember that that very much reflected a thinking at the time that I think was kind of pervasive in local government, which fortunately, I think, has diminished at least somewhat. The hard challenge from this presentation that I can see is less, I think, political will. I think members of this body and our staff, I think, are, don't need too much persuasion when it comes to, you know, taking positive next steps to try and implement parts of these plans. The hardest challenge for us is dealing with alternative jurisdictions, including private business owners who sometimes, for reasons inexplicable, reject offers to make improvements, and then as well as working with other jurisdictions. I'm curious, from your experience, what are some of the better practices you've seen implemented to get a lot of different stakeholders on board? Say, as an example, a state highway administration who controls a road where these changes would be made- be made, or as a hypothetical, a commercial business owner that may or may not return our calls on any given month or quarter. What tends to work best?
Yeah, I mean, one of the things that we intended with the software component is to have that be something that the city can choose to use with different stakeholders. I think that there's something to be said about having them, you know, play with the little SimCity part of it, and being able to see how that impacts economic development. And I think that that's particularly important from the business industry side of things, right? I think that that becomes compelling, especially when you start to show them that this could very much be in their best interest, right? So being able to quantify that in ways that resonate with those stakeholders is really important. And that's one of the reasons we also, I mean, obviously, this focus was on economic development, but we can point to the other benefits, reductions in vehicle collisions and reductions in how much people are driving, which is tied to greenhouse gas. So like, even if the city hasn't done that, we've done that in other areas, and you can point to that, that the state-of-place index is tied to these other benefits. There's health benefits, of course, that we've quantified, crime as well. So the idea is to kind of weave a narrative based off of the things that are most sort of resonating for that person, for that stakeholder. You know, here, of course, the focus was economic development. But with the state highway, those are the hardest ones, I would say, or one of the hardest ones, mostly because the motivations tend to be different. And so I think it's really about, you know, bringing them along and really understanding where those motivations are different, where there's overlap, and again, using the data to be able to guide, like, well, this is one of the reasons we had so many different recommendations. There's different ways to create a good street, and they're likely in those 600,000 combinations, something that y'all can agree upon and still improve the built environment and the value that's associated with that.
So you're saying the key to persuasion is to find out what the other party really wants, and then to connect that to what we want? Actually, I'm not teasing. I mean, you're getting to the heart of the matter, which I appreciate. I really appreciate it. My only other question is, and this is a bit of a circular conversation, we always ask presenters, where are their pots of money? They will name some pots of money. We will bring those pots of money, and the people who gatekeep that money will tell us why we can't access that money later on. But, you know, servant of tradition, I will ask anyway, what pots of money should we be exploring?
Well, I don't think, I'm not sure how much longer this is on the table, although actually, there is a grant round right now, but from USDOT, the Safe Streets for All grant. Literally, the next deadline is April 4th. Don't recommend that, but there's May 16th deadline, and I believe sometime at the end of September is the third round of deadlines. Obviously, that's focused more on road safety, but again, the built environment is very much tied to that. And this would allow you to kind of get this data for every single block within the city, for example, because we're working on that kind of proposal with other cities throughout the country. But that's a very good sort of pot of money to go to. They have planning grants, they have demonstration grants, and they have implementation grants. And if you've already done some sort of action plan, you can go to the implementation grant, sort of skip, 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 go, and go there, right? So that's kind of one that comes to mind, but there's also so many other pots of money that have come from the Infrastructure Act, you know. There's even money from EPA, if you focus it on sort of electric vehicle citing, but there's a clear connection to the built environment there, right? And there's different aspects of infrastructure that need to go along with EVs, not just the EV charging station itself, because a lot of these things need to be walkable, especially if you don't have your own station, your own EV in your home, right, as a single-family home. So there are other sort of creative ways to think about this, because the current administration at the federal level really is focusing a lot on the built environment, and it's showing up across multiple federal agencies, including EPA, HUD, you know, DOT, you know, even HHS, because they're looking at the health impacts of that. There's quite a bit, and I can give you more, but that's kind of high-level what I'm thinking.
No, that's really helpful. I don't want to manipulate too much your time. What is your availability to us as a city going forward if we have follow-up questions or thoughts? What is the anticipated level of collaboration between you or your team and the city, either councilor staff?
I mean, always happy to answer questions if you have more after this, and you can, you know, schedule a time to meet if you'd like. With the city itself, we're going to be working with them to make sure that they understand how to use the recommendations, how to implement that into the software, using the scenario tool, and then we'll be building out the report. So if there's any questions that you have, like, can potentially even integrate that into the report, if possible. So, and then after that, I mean, the idea is, you know, if the city would like to continue using the software or expand some of the forecasting that we've done, we're of course available.
I appreciate that. My next question is for Mr. Minor. Mr. Minor, what else should we know, and what do you recommend as next steps? I'm just curious.
Well, Councilmember Stev, it would be my intention to spend the next three to four weeks working with the data spreadsheets that are what were described tonight, working with my staff, working with John Henry King, and trying to establish a prioritized listing of things, which we would then try to implement through various means, you know, whether it's asking the state to do something on a road, or whether it's asking for funding for certain types of improvements, or meeting with developers on their particular projects. One of the reasons why we focused on the Bowie Town Center is that in John Henry King's part of the budget, he had an objective to try to really examine the fabric of the town center, and to try to make that a more viable option. And so I think we're going to have enough information from this study that will allow us to approach the property owners and try to get some of that dialogue going.
I appreciate that, Mr. Minor. Thank you again.
Thank you. Mayor Proton?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for being here this evening with us, and thanks for the great presentation. Couple of things that I took note of. The first is that two of the three areas that you ended up focusing on are ostensibly in private hands, that is to say, a couple of owners for large swaths of retail. I mean, if you're looking at Bowie Town Center, if you're looking over at the 450 properties in that area. How have you seen this type of information used to advance the cause of improving these properties, frankly, at their own expense? I mean, if I'm looking at what you're showing here in some of the ROI numbers, if I'm a businessperson, and I'm going like, whoa, if I can change the look and feel of my property, I can increase my rents, I can increase my, you know, property values or what have you, you know, obviously improve the likelihood of being fully rented in terms of retail spaces, quality of stores, and that sort of thing. What have you seen done in that sort of environment?
Yeah, I mean, again, I think it has to do with, you know, beginning a dialogue with the business development community, or the business owner, you know, business owners, property owners, and, you know, understanding kind of maybe, you know, what are their plans? What, are they happy with where they're at right now? Like, is there room for improvement? You know, and if there is room for improvement, but they haven't acted on it, trying to understand the why behind that? What are the barriers that they've faced? What are the challenges? Because it might be that they haven't had access to this kind of information, and they think, well, it's fine, and everything's, you know, kind of going within a certain level of expectation, and they don't even realize that there is a potential to improve a place. So like, being armed with this kind of data and evidence just makes it easier to engage in that dialogue. And again, really, like, I'm always a proponent of first starting with the problem, like, what, and from that person's perspective, you know, whatever stakeholder you're working with. So starting there, identifying where those challenges are, and then, you know, thinking through, like, well, it's likely because they think, oh, this is a difficult capital market environment, so how am I even going to convince the bank to get this? Oh, well, we've got some data that can help you do that, and we can, you know, offer that to you and help you, right? And here are some other things that, you know, the city can do for some of these blocks that can help, you know, increase your property value, or, you know, just the attractiveness of the area. And then, but if you do these other things that we can't do, that's more on the private sector's side, together now, we have a scenario that really, really increases the score and the ROI of everything. So it just helps to kind of show very easily how, you know, public-private partnerships are collaborating, or even just their efforts, you know, can work to their benefit, and help overcome those perceived challenges that maybe won't be challenges if they have access to this data.
Thank you. So there's another aspect to this, and the ROI numbers were impressive. You put in $5 million, you get $33 million or $36, depending on which version of the decade is, and that's fine. It's all close enough for our discussions this evening. It's meaningful. The issue, though, is it's not necessarily an ROI that accrues to us, that is to say, the city and its expenditures. Can you take this model and go a step further, and take a look at what the ROI is for our local government? We obviously, we have taxes, property taxes, that's our main benefit. Obviously, there's, it's more than just money. We want to have a nice, walkable, livable community, and we want our residents to have a better place to live and have life experiences than just, you know, kind of ordinary, plebeian-type things. We'd like it to be exciting and dynamic. But it's, but the fact of the matter is, and not that I would suggest it would end up this way, but if I put in $5 million, $33 million is going to property owners from the ROI standpoint. So it's more about a question, okay, well, how can I justify that in terms of whatever money I end up spending, and what comes back to the city? Is that something that can be worked into your model?
Yeah, so one of the four economic metrics was, you know, property values, rather, well, the listing price, the average median listing price. So obviously, that can be extrapolated into, what does that mean for the tax revenue, you know, on a per-square-foot basis for the city? So that would be the easiest extrapolation. There are other ways to kind of expand models that, you know, I've worked with the city of Henderson, near Nevada, and near Las Vegas, where we specifically just did the property tax revenue, like, looking at that specifically. But there's an easy, it's an easy step to take from getting the property values. But you can also extrapolate this to actual land value. So there's really no limit in terms of what we can predict, except for that we need to have access to that data, all right? So if you have access to land value data, or like, you know, we only looked at residential property, I don't know if the city also does commercial property taxes, but that's another way to think about it. So there are other ways to sort of directly look at it. We've also looked at, you know, other things that are broader economic development, number of jobs, or like, types of jobs, and, you know, there's other ways to tell that story that is, you know, helps you sort of justify the actual public money being spent. But, you know, for this study, we were sort of, you know, just focused on these metrics, but you clearly have the residential property value that's easy enough to translate into what does that mean for your tax base.
Great. Joe, is that some information that you think you have adequate access to? All the property value-type information? I mean, we have assessed values for property.
Well, we can begin to look at that. I don't know how, you know, how precise we're going to be able to be with it, but I think the idea, though, is to really create some sort of a longer-range plan of attack or a strategy, where it's a partnership, where the city does its part, the private sector does its part, and so we would use this information to try to convince people to work in the direction that we think we want to go. So I don't think there's a quick and easy, you know, accessing a certain amount of data would then give us the answer, but I think we can continue to work with the information that we have, and try to make the best case, you know, to try to sell the direction we want to go. So I don't know if I'm answering your question entirely, but I don't think there's a simple way to just, you know, acquire something, and then that would answer the question.
Well, I think it's more along, just along property assessments and property values along those lines, and be able to sketch out what areas are affected by this, positively affected by the improvements, and being able to say, hey, look, I'm going to generate some meaningful increase in my property taxes. As a result of this, over a 10-year period, it might be X, you know, percent increase, or dollar value, or something along those lines. And then I'll close with, I think the Old Town Bowie area is different than the other two, in that it's multiple owners, it's more of a kind of a, I don't want to say urban, but it's more of a little community, street-type operation, as opposed to a large tract owned by a single owner, or, you know, a couple of major players. And I do think that there are significant, you know, struggles. We've got to work with state highway administration, because we don't own all the roads there, but we certainly have, I think, an interest, and this, perhaps, we can be, make it a useful conversation piece for us, as we're having those conversations. So thank you very much for your time this evening and the work you put into it. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Councilman?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the presentation. It was very informative, and I think, I thought I heard someone use the term SimCity in describing what this whole process seems to be. And, you know, with SimCity, if you get to a point you don't like, you just reboot the system, and you start all over again. But in reality, we have an existing community, and there are very good things about it, but there are also some negative things, I won't say bad, negative things associated with it. And it's on how to transform the negatives, make them become positives. And so one of the questions I would have would be, is this more intended as guidelines, you might say, a carrot for developers and property owners to come around to it, or is it something that could feed into design guidelines and regulations in the approval process, say, at Park and Planning, when they're looking at new developments? Is, you have a thought either way on that, or both?
It's meant to be both, yeah. So the, we've always thought about this as kind of a twofold issue that a lot of cities faced, is how do you optimize resources, right? So what are the specific changes that you can make to, you know, increase value, given that you can't do everything? And then, at the same time, use that information to quantify the upside, to begin to, again, kind of create narratives that bring people to where you are. So the idea is twofold. I think that what you're getting at is sort of a, somewhere in the middle, where, and we've had this conversation with, because we also work with private sector developers as well, who are then trying to convince the city. But there are situations in which the city is asking their private developers for certain, you know, changes to their plan. And so this helps you both identify, what, you know, what are those changes that we might want to focus on, and that the private sector could do that really increases the value to the city? But then sometimes, there's pushback from the private developer, and this can help you with that, too. So the idea is to be able to kind of do both things at the same time, is make those better decisions that optimize value, but then, because you've made those decisions in an evidence-based way, then it starts to make it easier for you to explain the why behind those decisions.
Okay. And it seems like this is something that really evolves. You can't just set it in stone today and assume that five years from now, or 10 years from now, it'll still be addressing the situation, because it's static. Situations tend to change. So is there any kind of guidance or recommendations on how frequently, or how soon, we should be updating this as we move forward in this process?
Yeah, I mean, I think it depends on the city, on the pace of development within that city. The built environment is something that doesn't tend to change very quickly, you know, so it, but for some cities, it makes sense to do it quarterly, for some cities, it makes sense to do it yearly, some, you know, up to two to three years, in terms of the built environment data itself. For the economic analysis, we had been using the results of the study that we did in Brookings up until COVID, and they were quite valid in predicting quite accurately still, you know, the potential upside. So those, the forecasting model itself doesn't need to be updated that regularly, unless there's a new... there's a new dynamic in the market like COVID, or maybe interest rates coming back down, where you would want to assess that, or really big changes in supply that might impact what we're really measuring, which is demand. So that really can change, you know, but I would say up to five years, you're at least good.
Thank you. I appreciate your feedback and your input. Thank you, Mayor.
Hey, thank you so very much. Let me, well, do we have anyone? I can't see the other council members. I don't see if they're, have any question. At this point, though, before we go. Okay, there we go. I'll wrap up. You go ahead, and then I will wrap up.
So I was sitting here kind of itching as I listened to the other comments because I'm very familiar with data modeling. And I believe that when I was asking for the numbers, I wanted to make sure that my numbers were correct so I could understand your modeling. I think what the city has done by bringing your organization in to do this is an outstanding thing to do, because in order to move forward in a smart way, we need the data to drive that. And the data will drive not only our decision-making, but it will also drive us in the direction of how we go about getting our resources. It will drive our decisions around our tax base and what we need to have in place in order to do that. It will drive the decisions particularly around small businesses. I'm a small business owner, I'm the president of the local chamber, and what we need is capital. So it also exposes us to the opportunities for capital. So right now, this is just a model. I don't expect any other decisions to be made around that, but I expect that, once we have this model in place, we'll be able to make some smart growth decisions around our community so that it is a place where we can live, work, and play. So I thank you for that, and I thank the city for moving forward with data-driven decision-making. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I just kind of want, number one, thank you for the presentation. I think the council, my council members have asked some good questions. A couple of quick things for me. As we look at the relationship, i.e. of working together between you and with Joe Myer, well, with the city, and I know Joe talked about several weeks and going back and that, would you be actively engaged in that as well?
So what our firm will be doing is guiding Joe and his team to make sure that they understand the recommendations that we've provided for them. We'll be providing those top percentage of the scenarios, we're not going to give them all $600,000, it's overwhelming, but that way, they can use the tool itself to put those, to test out the scenarios, test out different combinations, because they're going to be the experts in thinking about which of those combinations or recommendations makes sense. But our goal is to kind of guide them in that process, for them to be able to use the tool without relying on us, and which is why we provide software as a service rather than like a typical kind of like consulting arrangement would be.
So having said that, as we move forward, is there any additional data? I mean, what you've put in now, what you have now, do you see where we need to tweak that or add any additional data right now before Joe gets going and looking at that? Because I understand we'll be taking over, are working with the model and making those decisions from that. But as you see it now, do you feel you've completed what you need to do or that initial step to be able to give to Mr. Myer and for them to take over the software and get going?
I mean, certainly for now, I mean, in terms of what we discussed doing at the beginning, you know, was really providing that updated model across those, you know, key economic metrics, and then translating it for them into these recommendations that then they could model out themselves, you know, because the 6.7 ROI was just one, sort of one example I put together, right? But the idea is for them to actually do that with the scenarios that they feel is the most appropriate for the city, because we're just, you know, we're coming in and we're just providing sort of that base data as well as the technology to help them use that data on their own, not just with us. So they'll have several months to use the software on their own, and of course, you know, we would love to continue working with them. There's many other things we could do to expand models and a whole bunch of other fun things we could do, but it really has to do with, you know, what value the city needs and how we can provide that.
Okay. I guess one last thing, and my question is, as we're going into our budget cycle, I believe we may need to see if there are any additional resources that we need on interpreting the data and using the software itself. So Joe, I'm sure you'll be able to inform us as we move forward on where that stands.
Sure. This product is actually available on an ongoing basis through a subscription so that you could continue to do analysis over time. There may be additional studies that we might want to enter into from an economic perspective that this firm can provide. So it's, you know, we could certainly give a short-term, mid-term, and long-term recommendations. Not sure how much we would really be able to ask for this upcoming budget cycle, but the point is that there is an ability to continue with the subscription or to supplement the information we have now with additional studies, but that's something I think we need to have further discussion on, especially with John Henry King.
Okay, thank you. Well, I'd like to thank you on behalf of the city, the council, on a great presentation. I'd like to thank everyone involved on doing this, because it's going to be another great tool to have in our toolkit as we move the city forward. I think our council members have talked about that, because it is about data-driven decisions, because that old saying, people may lie about the numbers, but the numbers don't lie. So thank you so very much.
Thank you.
All right. The next item is Item D, Annexation Presentation. And we'll turn it over to the city staff.
Just one moment. We're going to need to get the password to unlock this computer. Mark?
I'm sorry, what did you say?
We inadvertently went to sleep on a terminal, so we need a password open. First time this has happened.
Okay, well, thank you. Well, I'd like to again say thank you to the council members, good questions, and I think it is a great tool for us to look, to move forward to. As we wait, if it takes more than a minute, I would like to jump on the agenda and move to the two letters, if you'd like to. Are you ready now? Okay.
Well, that was short.
Yeah. Mr. Myer, go right ahead.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor. This item on the agenda is Item D, the Annexation Presentation, and council had asked for staff to provide some background as far as the city's current annexation process and procedures and anything that would be helpful for further discussion. I believe it was council member Inde Bhamadu who had requested this, as well as some additional information about city property ownership. So I'm prepared tonight to run through a series of slides and just give you some of that background, and we can have discussion. First map that I have up on, or the first slide I have up there is just the city annexations map. It shows you that there has been quite a bit of annexation activity since 1984. These are the annexations that are mapped, the most recent ones being South Lake, the Church Road property where the former ice arena was proposed. But this gives you an idea how much the city has grown through annexations. I wanted to point out that the council does have an existing policy, that's R1206, which is establishing the principles to be used in the annexation process. And this was done at a time when a lot of the counties in the state were going through a growth management and trying to identify growth limits, and so the city did follow suit and adopt a policy as well as a growth limits boundary, which is incorporated into this policy. One of the things that's important to emphasize is that the current policy does, if you look there under Item B on the left-hand side, it says reasonable and consistent cost-benefit guidelines in relation to public facilities and municipal revenue will govern the development and consideration of annexation agreements. So it's always been an important factor to try to balance the impacts to the city financially of annexations. This is the growth limits map that I mentioned, outlined in blue. At the time, we did this in 2006. It was just an exercise to identify a possible future growth boundary of the city and then to analyze that information. So you can see in the blue outline, basically using Church Road on the west and Route 301 on the east. So that's actually adopted as part of that resolution that I described. In terms of annexation impact analyses, our finance department has prepared a tool that we use when we're talking about annexing subdivisions, considering the number of homes, the average assessed value of those homes, and then looking at the factors for taxes as well as expenditures that the city goes through, using its own budget as the basis, looking at the types of services that the city provides, including solid waste, street maintenance, code compliance, and those types of services that the city provides. And so it's really a tool for assessing the revenue that would be coming to the city through property taxes against the expenditures that the city would need to provide, the services to that subdivision. This is actually a populated example, it's a little bit older, but it was for the Adnell Woods subdivision in Old Town Bowie where we annexed 80 homes, a total of 80 homes, with an average value of about $406,000 per home, and this was in fiscal '14. And you can see there that the expected property taxes were, on an annual basis, estimated to be about $129,000 or $130,000, and then subtracting out those expenditures of $103,000, and you can see toward the bottom right-hand corner of the chart, that for that particular annexation, there was a positive net impact of $67,694 on an annual basis. And so this is a tool, as I mentioned, that it's probably the best thing we could do to try to get a handle on what the expected revenues would be and what our expected expenditures would be, so that we could perform that analysis as I cited in the annexation policy. Just a couple of other comments about the possible growth limits, that area surrounding the city in blue. We conducted a really cursory analysis of what would be involved in annexing all those areas, and a couple of these attributes. The city would, if we annexed the area surrounding in blue, the city would expand to almost 30 square miles from about 12 square miles. We analyzed the number of people that would come into play if we annexed that entire area, really increasing the city's population by about 33% to about 73,000 or 74,000 residents. We also noted that that particular blue outlined area has a lot of tax-exempt properties, including the Bowie State University. So about 25% of that area would be tax-exempt area, so there would not be revenue coming to the city. We noted that that boundary also included numerous vacant commercial properties, and this was back in 2006 when we did the analysis. Since that time, we have conducted a few commercial property annexations, which have been extremely positive for the city's financial situation. And then looking at the number of roads that were in those particular areas, we identified over 85 miles of public roads, and as council is aware, you would receive highway user revenues, funding through the state based on the number of miles you have in your boundaries. So that's just an illustration. It was an illustrative thing for the city council at the time, and it was helpful just to understand the magnitude or the, to appreciate what would be involved if the city did go through a growth scenario. This next slide is the tax bill comparison, and this is probably the most important piece of information when we meet with homeowners who are interested in annexing in the city. And Matty Bersardo, who is here with me tonight, really knows the ins and outs of this particular piece of information. But we try to sit down with the property owner, we look up their own assessment in the tax records, and we can put this information in and get a printout like you see here, which provides, as you see towards the bottom, the difference in total taxes if incorporated into the city. And in this particular example, and this was from fiscal year '24, if a home was valued at $450,000, considering all of the taxes that would need to be paid, and obviously, your county tax goes down when you're incorporated into the city, then you have to pay the city's tax on top of that, the net difference would be, for this particular home, $618,000, or, I'm sorry, $618.41, and that's per hundred, that's per year total, and that's just an estimate for one year. So it's a difficult situation when you sit with property owners and you show them this information, and they say, you mean, my taxes are going to go up? And really, based on the value of the home, the taxes will go up, and the higher the value of the home, the higher the tax increase. So that, it's really important to understand this, because it is a difficult decision, because a lot of people are fixed with their mortgage payments and really do not want to be able to, or do not want to have to pay additional taxes, although they do value the services that the city provides. The final slide I have here is really showing this, changing gears, showing the geographic locations of city properties, and we've broken them down into parks and recreation properties, properties that are used for stormwater management in the blue color, and then there are some vacant properties for which there really is not a defined purpose. And we provide it in your packet, an actual listing or printout that goes along with this That would conclude my presentation, and I'm hopefully setting the stage for a council discussion, and I believe council member Inde Bhamadu had intended to have a discussion with council. And so if there's any questions, Matty Bersardo and I are here to answer questions you may have.
First and foremost, Mr. Myer, thank you so very much. There's a lot of information included in the presentation of what we need to do and kind of the historical information as well. I think what we see is a good point here about services rendered and the challenges that may be faced by the homeowner when it comes to taxes and all, but I'm sure a lot of them would think $573 to get their trash picked up twice a week would be worth it. So having said that, I will see if council member Inde Bhamadu would like to speak on this, since she requested it on the agenda. We cannot hear you.
Okay, awesome. Can you hear me now?
Yes, yes. Go ahead, please.
Hold on. This is, well, here.
Is now exiting.
I'm not sure who just left.
I think that was her telephone.
She's using her phone.
Okay. Trying to make the technology work. Are you able to? Are you able to connect, councilwoman? Councilwoman Ende Bumadu, can you hear me? Not if you can hear me.
I dialed back in. Can you hear me now?
There you go. We can hear you now.
Fantastic. Thank you so much. Thank you so much for that wonderful presentation, Mr. Minor. It was really, really great context. I did request this presentation be brought to the council for two reasons. One, for newer members that were on the council to kind of understand where things were today regarding annexation, both on the residential property side and the commercial side. So I thought that was really, that would be really, really helpful for newer members to the council. And then the second part of it was to really just get an understanding from staff in terms of the growth map presentation that you shared with us. I know I hadn't dove into that much and knew that context. I thought it was really helpful. Part of this being that I know in the past, I have heard from some adjacent surrounding neighborhoods that may have like six houses here, eight houses there, or let's say 20 houses there, in terms of what our annexation process is and what it looks like to possibly be a part of the city of Bowie. Most of the times when I've had those conversations, all of those residents seem to be fine knowing that their taxes would increase because to them it justified the service. And so for this, the purposes of this presentation, what I really wanted to get an understanding from staff was just exactly what you presented, but then in addition to that, understanding if we had the capacity, should other neighborhoods be interested in coming to the city of Bowie and positioning annexing their neighborhood app? And did we, as a city government, have the capacity for that? And that's really what I wanted to learn. Thank you.
I guess I could answer the question in reference to the example that I provided earlier with the annexation impact analysis. In some cases, certain communities, because of the number of homes or the home values, do not result in a positive, a positive annexation scenario for the city. And so in some cases, it may not be worth the city's efforts to bring in a particular subdivision if the city is, on an annual basis, spending more money to provide the services than we are revenue coming in. And the example I would give, I talked about the 80-lot subdivision of Adenel Woods. At the same time we annexed that area, there was an intervening community of 18 homes that were older homes as part of the Huntington City portion of the city, and the values were different. They were not the same as a brand-new house being built. And in fact, the city would have experienced a loss, and that loss of impact if we were just annexing that particular 18-home neighborhood. But in the total picture, annexing the 80 homes that were new, that had a high, high expected value per home, it all kind of balanced out. So I think the tool is, it's as good of a tool as we have, but I think the conditions are going to vary based on the number of homes, the value of the homes. In some cases, there are physical improvements and upgrades that have to be made to streets or stormwater facilities that exist because the city would take over the stormwater facilities in a residential area. So there would be additional costs to the city which have to be factored into the impact analysis. So I hope that I'm providing a little bit of a scenario for you to appreciate that.
Yes, thank you so much, Mr. Minor.
Thank you, Mr. Minor. Are there any other questions? Go right ahead.
I had one more question, Mr. Mayor. Just one more.
Please go right ahead.
Okay, Mr. Minor, just one last question for you. Thank you so much for that previous answer. In your past experience, can you give us an example of when it has benefited the city to annex a particular commercial parcel into the city?
Well, generally speaking, annexation of commercial areas is always positive to the city from a revenue standpoint because there are very few services that the city would need to provide. You know, we would not pick up trash. We would not do road improvements or things like that. We would provide police service, obviously, and that's probably the big service that we would be providing. But the properties on Route 301, for example, the car dealerships, the Bowie Honda in that area Nissan, that was a net positive for the city, and the city really did not need to provide many services. In addition to that, I believe there's an inventory tax that the city benefits from as well. So really, commercial property annexations are always going to accrue to the city's benefit.
Thank you, Mr. Minor, and thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I thank you, councilwoman. Any other questions from any other councilmembers? All right, Mr. Minor, thank you so very, very much. Oh.
Everyone's to your right. Forget about me. See, everyone's to your right. I must be liberal in the group. Thank you, Mayor. A couple of comments to start off. Annexation is a process that we control. We decide when we annex a piece of property in or we don't annex them, and it was totally under our control. And usually, and quite often, the 20 years I was on the council, many of our annexations were tied to development. There's a lot of growth going on, Saddle Brook East, Saddle Brook West, and quite a few other subdivisions came in because as we worked with the developer in the development process, they agreed to annexation. They got the signatures of the buyers as they sold homes, and then we annexed them in at some point. So it's an actual process and was, has worked quite, quite well. There are times when residents can initiate a request for annexation, and then we have the sheet that staff does to figure out what the cost of that would be to the city. How much are we going to get in revenue from the taxes? How much is the cost of services? And how much are their taxes going to go up? And I can, I recall immediately before I got on the council, Collington Station annexed in. That's when we first went south of Central Avenue. And it was interesting because they had a few issues that were of prime importance to them, regardless, well, not regardless, but they were willing to accept slightly increased taxes. And I think the taxes increased $50 or $60 a year. One of them, they asked us if they could get, or how soon would it take for the city to get Comcast in to give them cable? This is in 1993. How fast would it take them, how, the city to get Comcast in to start laying cable? And we told them, as soon as the annexation is finalized, we'll tell them to go in and start laying cable. In the county, they were, they were told that it would be five years before they could get that service. That was one thing to our benefit. Another to our benefit was they were considered Upper Marlboro for the post office. So any of their mail, they had to go down to Upper Marlboro Post Office to get it. And they said, can you get us transferred to Point Ridge? And we said we'd do the best we could. We were able to do it. That was a feather in our cap with regard to that. Street maintenance, snow pile, snow removal was another. So the citizens decided that they were willing to pay a little bit more in taxes in order to get those benefits. So it worked out nicely for both. When we annexed in Stewart's Landing, as part of that annexation, we brought in the West Bowie Village commercial component. So there was a benefit to us with that. And then I'll tell you the story about 12 Oaks, and this leads into a suggestion I have. 12 Oaks, about 20 years ago, some of the members of the community wanted to annex in, 40%, I think, was the threshold, the number of residents that supported it. And two of my colleagues at the time said, well, state law only requires us to act on a petition that has 25%, so let's annex. And we did. Went through the whole annexation process, finalized everything. And then the residents that didn't want to come into the city went around, got a petition, and I found it interesting at the time, my understanding, those that opposed to annexation only needed 20% to have annexation, needed 25%. I don't know what the... So they got a petition, it was validated, and we had a whole special election. I think 113 homes participated in that, and 60% of them voted not to annex. So we had to de-annex them because they didn't want to pay the added taxes to come in. And the reason I say that leads into something, I think we need to update the resolution that oversees the annexation procedure that we have. And I think we need to put language in there because at the time, it was accepted that we preferred a community to have greater than 50, and we told, at times told them we wanted 70 to 80% of support so that we didn't get in, in the future, get into this kind of a situation where we annex those that didn't want to become in petition, and they're successful, and we have to de-annex. So I think in the resolution, or the regulation, whatever form it takes, we ought to have a paragraph that talks about, we want a majority of the residents that petition to support annexation, if that's legally possible.
So first of all, you don't de-annex. It's just that the annexation doesn't become effective. The red, the language you're talking about wouldn't go in the resolution because by the time the resolution is introduced, you've already assessed the support of it through the 25% or however many people had petition. You can require, I think you can, I want to look into this legally because the state law sets forth specific requirements for the annexation process. But they, and that's that you have a minimum of the 25%. But I don't know any reason that you can't have more than that, off the top of my head. I can look into it for you.
Okay. My comment had to do with our guidelines that we have established for how we do the annexation, not the resolution that annex them in. So I'll just clarify that point. And if you can clarify that, can we do greater than 25%? Because it doesn't make sense. I find the state law a little bizarre when it comes to that. So those are a couple of examples, and one leads into, almost done.
No, no, no.
Okay, okay. And then I was talking to the city manager today, and I know we are supportive of the effort to rename the Nash Woods after the late Senator Peters. And it butts the city, I think, on, the city butts it on two sides, maybe more. And I think we ought to annex that. And it's strictly a government property. I don't believe there'd be a property, a problem with the county. It's just an open woods area, so has no potential for any kind of commercial development. I think we ought to look at annexing that. And then I understand, when I was on the council before, any development proposal within one mile around the city that Park and Planning was working on would be referred to the city for our comment and feedback. I understand, and I may be mistaken on this, but my understanding is that in the last four years, the city has stepped away from that, not doing that many of them.
We've still been maintaining that.
Oh, we still have it? Okay. Then that comment goes away. Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate that.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none at this time. We will now go to item F and G that we moved from the consent agenda to new business. And I will turn to councilmember Brady for his comments on that.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Just real quickly, 98% of the two letters I'm very supportive of. I think there's some additional language that we ought to add to both of them. On the letter to Prince George's County on the budget, there is a, there's a paragraph that talks about Church Road, and my understanding, staff provided me the information, that the extent of this project that we're talking about goes from Central Avenue at Grovehurst all the way up to Mount Oak. And it's, I think the number was 16 million. I may have that number wrong. But anyway, there's a, that we're encouraging them. My reason for raising this, I think we ought to add some additional language because the middle part of that, the very twisted, curvy section there by Church Road Park, needs to be done. We can't wait for them to get around to do that whole segment from Central to Mount Oak. So I think we ought to add language that basically says if they are not able to fund the whole project in the very near future, this county should at least address that section of the roadway, and we would be willing to partner with them in land, necessary land coming from the park in order to get that segment improved. So I'd like to add a little bit of language to that paragraph that includes pulling out that section to be done in the extreme near future as soon as possible.
I'd like to turn to the council to see if there's any. For those who may not be aware, Councilman Brady is talking about, there is a real severe S portion on Church Road that is in the middle, that has really been very dangerous over many years. And I think what he's saying is that he would like for us to have staff look at putting something in there that says, let's make that part a priority. If you can't do the whole thing, at least make that a priority for right now. And I think that would be something that would be beneficial to us and more importantly to the citizen. So I'd like a general consensus from the council if they're okay with doing that, putting that language in, asking them to draft something so we could take a look at and add to the letter. Councilmembers, is there a question? Go ahead. Go ahead. Councilmember Ende Bumadu, go ahead. She was holding her finger up behind your head. I think she disappeared.
She was giving her thumbs up.
Oh, I thought she was waving. Councilwoman Rogers, go ahead. Then we'll have the mayor pro tem.
Okay, so as someone that travels that S, been doing it for 25 years, I can get up a good speed to go around it. I feel like I'm in a racing car. I do, I do agree with Councilman Brady, that area also floods, and if a tree falls, then the whole road is shut down. The mayor knows. I mean, we, that's how a lot of us get to Central Avenue. The woods are coming over into the roads and scratching the sides of your car as you go through it. So I do believe it, it should be a priority. Yes, thank you.
Councilman Truesdale, were you holding your hand up? Mayor pro tem, I'm going to get you.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I do agree with my colleagues that we should definitely make that a priority. Just experiencing 11 years ago with my family, you know, we had a severe accident in terms of, you know, our vehicle was turned sideways. It was, it was bad weather. That had a lot to do with it, but for the most part, I definitely think we should prioritize improving that part if we cannot, you know, do it all.
Okay, thank you. Mayor pro tem?
Absolutely. No qualms, it's a great idea, no issue. Turn to staff, do you need this sooner rather than later?
This is very clear in terms of what the expectations are, so if you approve the letter, we'll add some language to reflect this and get the letter off right away.
Okay, great. Thank you. And I think we're in consensus on that. Going to the other item.
Thank you. Real quickly, just to follow up on that, the last item, my involvement with this started about 20 years ago when there was a fatality there. Young man lost his life in that curve, and I brought it up with my colleagues on the council. We contacted then-county Councilman Peters, and he did a study. And a result from that was the realignment of the Church Road inter- was the realignment of the Church Road intersection at Mount Oak. So, the second item, and my computer just went down, so hold on. The second item is the letter to Park and Planning. I think we ought to add a very brief new paragraph that describes our effort to reconstruct our ice arena in a new location and ask for their willingness to partner with us in the cost of it, just as, to let them know, kind of as a marker, and see if we can't move forward and help fund it jointly rather than on our own. So I think we ought to include language in that letter. I mean, all they can do is say no.
Right, I was about to say, it can't hurt to ask again, so let's do that. All right, everybody's in consensus, I believe, on that? Okay. Well, we have those two items done. City manager, I think you've got a feel for what we're trying to do. Go ahead.
We understand, Mr. Mayor. We'll make the changes.
Sounds good. Hey, thank you. I will now entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All in favor, please respond with an aye. Opposed, say in favor. Hearing none, motion carries. Hey, I'd like to thank everyone, from my council, to colleagues, to city staff, but most importantly, to the citizens of Bowie.
Is now exiting.
Bang, deftly.
I pulled this out of my, out of my bag.
Oh, there you go.